...to town, seeing in ways we can enhance and beautify each area, especially those areas like on the post road where somebody getting off of I-95, that's the first thing they're gonna see. And if we want, you know, for example, the island in Koskow where Indian Field Road comes out to across from the Koskowar. It's okay looking, but it's kind of, it's tired. It's very, very tired. And we've talked about it for years. The state of Connecticut basically stopped cutting the grass about seven or eight years ago. And the town would cut every once in a while. But it should never get to this anyway. That's just maintenance and that's an issue. But overall look, aesthetics there is not what it should be.
I'm sorry Fred, just to interrupt you for one second. Margarita, can you hit record please?
Oh gosh, I'm glad somebody remembered. Thank you. All right.
So again, when you're looking at that area there, particularly that the post road area, we really want that to be inviting. We want people to take a double look at it and say, wow, we're entering a nice area, a nice town. And so to do that, we have, you know, we're trying to get all of the stakeholders, the residents there, town officials, any private entities that are willing to come forward, and many have, to see, and certainly the civic volunteers who are on this call right now too, to have a buy-in and to know, you know, know what the process is going forward. I just had an intern fill out all the encroachment permits for this area and for all of the underpasses of 95 and the railroad. We're gonna ship them up to DOT today or tomorrow. And hopefully we'll get the sign off so we can begin to not only take care of these things, maintain them, but also to permanently enhance them. And we have some great ideas on the table here. But this is, this is something I think that we can probably get done in, you know, two or three weeks, this particular project, with longer, longer term goals following. But certainly we can significantly enhance it. But we just need to get all the, all the components in place and everybody's buy-in and everybody knowing what the process is. We just can't go in there right now and do it. We need some approvals. It's that, just for anybody who doesn't know, that's the one road in the town of Greenwich that is owned by the state. So that is state property. So that's why we have to get the encroachment permits filled out. So with that, we have lots of people on the call here that are instrumental in, in the planning, in the discussions. And there's many more to come. So with that, I will turn it over to Katie. And again, thank you all for tuning in.
Thanks so much Fred. Good morning, everybody. The, the excitement behind everything that's happening here is felt, I think, by all of us, particularly from my standpoint as it relates to the plan of conservation development. Because the projects that Fred just mentioned stem directly from that document. And I'd just like to note that now, just because we are recording this, that Objective 5.6A states clearly that we should work with the Department of Transportation to enhance landscaping and streetscape design to meet the community character goals of the plan. And that has happened actually through one of these, one of these planning groups that we wanted to create, which is in an earlier part of the POCD. And that, that group is called the Greenscape Committee, which I think most of you are familiar with. Many of you are actually on the committee. So just a minute, I'm gonna hand that over to those guys to go through the plan. But I did just wanna put that plan in the context of the POCD. Because as I said, we talk in there about the improvements to the post road corridor. And that's what this Greenscape Committee has been able to accomplish in terms of setting guidelines and actual projects that we wanna move forward with. Hence the project that Fred was just talking about in Koskow there, across Indian Field. And that's our, that's our priority at this point is to work together to get that part of the plan implemented. And then from there, we have other projects that, that we, that relate to this. And I do wanna just kinda head in this direction, even though I know we were, we were kinda focusing just on the post road. But there is an item that has been in the capital budget since 2006 that Amy, Jim and myself put forth, which has yet to get approved. And that is another part of the POCD, which is to effectively use streetscape improvements to foster a sense of place, things, things like signage, additional landscaping. As I said, we have yet to get it pushed through. But I think now with this Greenscape Committee and with the adopted plan of conservation development and with the charge that Richard, John and John Eddy are gonna talk about in just a second, I think we have a good, a good approach here to get that budget item pushed through. So we, as Margarita said in her email, we can work with the NGOs and others and with each other to get a more detailed plan together for the villages. And from there, Amy and Jim and I can work on getting this budget item through so that we can actually get some of these improvements funded. So with that, I would just pass it on to explain how this Greenscape Committee has done a marvelous job. And you'll see that when you hear them go through it of implementing these key sections of the POCD to date. So with that, I'll pass it on to you guys. Thank you.
Fred, we've shared small pieces of this with you, but you haven't actually seen the graphics yet, the whole thing. Go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. I was honored to be asked to chair this little Greenscape Committee. And I think most, some of the people on this call were in the committee. We thought we'd meet for four or five weeks and we ended up meeting for, I think, almost five months, twice a week. And it was pretty amazing. We thought we would find, you know, one or two pockets along the post road to study. And we ended up actually going for the entire six miles. So we have with all the experts on the, on the panel, we had mapping and landscape architecture and conservation and tree experts and planners and architects, you name it, we had that expertise on that, on that call. Katie and Margarita were with us and gave us inspiration and guidance. And, you know, I think it really was quite an eye opener. You know, the high level view was, I think, we started by thinking we were gonna create this beautiful tree lined boulevard, which was the phrase that stuck in my mind from Katie's POCD pronouncements, you know, the tree lined boulevard. Of course, after about three weeks, we figured that this road that dated from the 1700s was never gonna turn into a tree lined boulevard like we think of in Europe. It's a twisty, turny, you know, commercialized thing which has pockets of beauty along the way. But obviously, as we all know, it's not, it's not Paris. Let's just put it that way. So we, we said, well, let's just turn that into, that, that, you know, that thought into an asset as opposed to a liability. So how do we take this, you know, commercialized, very busy traffic corridor and make it unique and beautiful and make it speak to the grandeur of Greenwich? So we went literally portion by portion, I think, how many maps did we end up with? Twenty-seven, John?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven maps. So literally starting at the Western Gateway, we, we drove all the way to Stanford digitally. And along the way, we recorded these maps, which all of the members of the committee contributed their viewpoint. We shared ideas. And I'm happy to say that the end of the six miles, we came up with what we call our guiding principles, which is a one pager, which we hope we can remember. It's sort of simple and self-sustaining as a thought process. And then we had these twenty-seven, thirty-seven graphics, which really are reflective of the guiding principles. So we tried to stay true to our consensus of what we all agreed to do. Following the thirty-seven maps, we then said, this is, this is too much. This is just gonna go and sit on a shelf and no one can ever deal with thirty-seven maps in six miles. So we said, let's find five actionable, what we call low hanging fruit, five actionable locations on the six miles that without too much effort could be polished up, you know, dusted off and try to get a couple wins on the board to say that we didn't waste our time, that there is something that we can do. One of the things that we had to come to grips with is, you know, the guiding principles are very far reaching. So I thought it would be important to say, if you wanted to act on any one of these sites, you don't have to tick off every guiding principle. You could tick off two or three and still make a net improvement to the experience along the post road. So that led us to the first and easiest one, which was this Chestnut Alley that Fred was describing earlier. Just, you know, that kind of was the simplest one for us to kinda wrap our heads around. The inspiration for that frankly came from Katie when she said, you know, what's special about the post road? One of the most special things about the post road is Crocus Hill. Crocus Hill, we all know what it is. We all celebrate it. It's a, it's a thing that everybody in Greenwich loves and is excited about, makes everybody happy. Can you, no pun intended, can you propagate that idea of Crocus Hill to other locations along the post road and say, wow, it's such a great idea. Why couldn't we do it in Riverside? Why couldn't we do it in Koskow? Why couldn't we do it in Glenville? And so that was kind of the way to kinda get into the process and say, well, yeah, what if we just planted bulbs on this Chestnut Alley? And then we said, well, if you plant bulbs, maybe you could plant a few more chestnuts. And maybe you could prune the trees. And maybe you could put some benches. And maybe you could put a bus stop. And maybe you could put a little pollinator corridor and some perennials and, you know, get all the different levels of horticulture involved. And so we then, after the thirty-seven maps, I went off and did a little sketch which articulates some of those ideas on the Chestnut Alley. And, okay, so that's where we got to as of, as of like literally today. We, we would like to be able to demonstrate to this committee that Chestnut Alley is actionable for, we think, I'll let Margarita get into the funding. But I think with, with the participation of all the groups, we think that we can demonstrate that it's achievable. And again, even if we capture two or three of the guiding principles, we think we will have put a run on the board and make a net improvement. So, so that's really where we are. That's what the Greenscape did. We think we can make a contribution by demonstrating on Chestnut Alley that these guiding principles will make a difference. And then maybe if that's the case, we could then go to some of the other more actionable sites on the, on the list, which I think we can share that list with everybody, Katie, and show them the sites that we thought were the low hanging fruit. And pretty much that's it. That's, that's pretty much what we did. So I don't, would you like us to kind of show the committee the, the maps, Katie, and go through the guiding principles? Or do you just wanna distribute that and people can read it on their own?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's in the agenda. And I think I would encourage people to click on the link and, and take a look at it. And you'll also see on there some of the other communities. Salem, Oregon was, was one that we all, resonated with all of us. Different community than Greenwich, they have wider sidewalks. But the, the one thing that I was laughing with Margarita about yesterday was the, they have this, in their notes section, they have the words world class. And that's something that came up a lot for us in our POCD. Because we do have a world class community here. And one of the big questions that we wanted answered in the POCD is how do we stay that way? So you'll see when you look at the photos in that plan, very similar to what DPW just did actually in front of, I always say Resouks, but that's from the eighties, where Mitchell Golds and whatever, they, you know, that whole stretch there. I mean, talk about just a beautiful enhancement to that area, I think. I think that came out wonderfully. And that's, that's the type of stuff you'll see in that Salem, Oregon plan. And that's the kinda thing that this Greenscape Committee wants to do in coordination with DPW. So I think it's definitely worth, worth a look there.
Well, DPW Parks and Rec and Conservation as well, that what a team, a cross-functional team can accomplish, because it considers everybody's priorities, respects everybody's areas of expertise and incorporates everybody's ideas, what this group did, it says so much. And it's just to keep that kind of initiative alive where we're all talking to each other and including each other and helping and letting each other do their own thing too. You know, not getting in each other's way.
We learned, we learned so much from those experts, Margarita. And it was, you know, we learned so much from every, every agency in town. And it, it helped get a better product. So that's again, that's, that's the strength of this committee, that we had all of that participation and a really thorough exchange of ideas over the months and months and months.
You guys will chuckle, cuz one day I read the minutes from a, actually it was a Parks and Rec RTM committee meeting. And Joe Siciliano was at that meeting. And he said, you know, our work process is so long because we have to get all these reviews and P and Z weighs in and it takes forever. And I thought, we have to fix that. Because we have to find a way that we're not dragging everybody back and it's all moving forward. So that was part of what the magic that this Greenscape Group really accomplished is that if you're listening to each other, okey dokey.
So just in terms of next steps, just as we, as we said, that we're gonna work together to get the Chestnut Traffic Island sorted out. That's, that's the first priority. At the same time, so simultaneously, we're going to work with whomever we can NGOs. I mean, we've, we've been tossing around some ideas already to, to get some of these neighborhood plans looked at so that, so that we can get that budget line item a little tighter and hopefully get that approved. And, and also define what it is exactly we're talking about within those, within that context too. So, and Jim, I know Jim has got some ideas on that that we talked about last week a little bit. So that's, that's already kinda moving in the right direction. So those are kinda the next steps of where we're heading, which I think is very positive.
So do you wanna, Katie, what do you wanna do? You wanna show people real fast what Greenscape looks like? Have you guys all seen it already? Amy, oh, Lauren Raven, of course. The BOS hasn't seen it at all. Okay, so let's just show real fast to the BOS. And I know Fred hasn't because we've been unscrolling pieces for him as we walked with him around town. John, can you pull up something that shows kinda what it looks like?
Yes, absolutely. So basically, Richard kinda said it all and has outlined the process. We, we first struggled with trying to figure out just how to, how to graphically represent a six mile stretch of road. And the GAS department, you know, with Don Clark, Dan Clark, yeah. Dan Clark at the, at the helm managed to generate these, these graphics for us. So they're all at one inch equals 20 foot scale, which is, is about the, you know, the, the smallest and that we can, that we can work with. What you see here on the screen is one snip of one of the thirty-seven maps, starting with the west end of town. And basically, what we tried to do was to just shine the light on each of these segments, look at, you know, the, the infrastructure, the, the plant material, you know, what's right about it and what's wrong about it, and then just make comments. And everybody just contributed. I think one of the guiding principles we discussed was just simple elegance really, that, that we're not gonna try too hard to make any one of these spots some sort of showstopper or some sort of, you know, horticultural miracle. It's really just a matter of simplifying, because we recognize that these places are seen mostly as drive-bys, right? As far as the Route 1 corridor goes anyway, right? These aren't really parks. These are just part of what we experience as a drive-through. So, so what we wanted to do is, is make sure that we were recognizing what was standing out, what could be greener. And I think a lot of what we identified was that just over time, there's a certain amount of atrophy, there's a certain amount of things that, you know, that, that, that change or degrade that need to be reviewed. You know, it's just like cobwebs build up and, and as we, as we go through it, hey, there's, there's a spot there that, that is now asphalt that maybe could be green again. Or there's some shrubs that have overgrown or trees that have overgrown that need to just be simplified and cleared out. A lot of it's actually subtracting. Subtracting clutter was one of the major themes. So, so this is an example of the graphic that came out. It, it's one stretch of the road, notes on it about what we observed, and then some photographs. And these take a minute to load, so bear with me. You know, here's another one that'll load up. You know, the, the next stretch up with photographs. And we did some very rough, I can't really zoom in on that. You know, we would, we would look at this island, for example, and say, gee, there's a lot of asphalt right there. Nothing buffering from the road to the, to the buildings. A little, you know, a tree would go a long way there, a small ornamental cuz there's wires overhead. Everything obviously has to be filtered through the infrastructure needs. One of the unbelievable values of this group was that everyone was at the table. You know, that we have DPW, we had Conservation, we had the Tree Warden. And that, that was one of the things that made this just such a valuable exercise. And what we hope is that over time, obviously, we're not gonna say, you know, let's fix the six miles tomorrow. But what happens is with these maps in hand, when a, when an application comes up, for example, if, you know, if this property were to come up as an active application, P and Z now has a little bit of guidance from the team that looked at this and say, hey, you know what? There, there was some thought that maybe a green strip or a hedge could be added here or that a tree on this corner. And the applicants are very eager to have guidance for what it is that, you know, that, that gets them approval. So these are tools that hopefully will be revisited time and time again as we go through, you know, years of applications coming up. But as Richard said, there are some spots that, you know, that the town can, can act on right away. If I'm just picking up one randomly, you know, Chestnut Alley was one, which this is not an image of. Here, we, we talked about safer crosswalks, we talked about adding trees here. So I do encourage you, these were our scribbles that, that we did actually during our live conversation where we said, wow, look at all that skyline. This is a lot of asphalt, some plantings could go in here. And again, it's, it's really just a matter of taking the time to slow down and look at each one of these segments and see what could be done. And by having everyone at the table, you know, it was possible to say, you know, can this be done or that? And, and just have it be a fairly well-informed process that, that did not include, you know, just some, you know, pie in the sky ideas that didn't get filtered through what, what really is practicality, hopefully.
John or, John or Jackie, do either one of you know the number for the exit five? I just have a request from someone in the audience that they'd love to see to show what, it's from Riverside, obviously, they wanna show exit five.
Can I just ask a question, not trying to second guess anything?
No, no, not at all.
And it's, it's greenscape, so I understand, you know, plantings and greenery. But I, I'm thinking just with things like drought, we're a seaside water town. Have you thought about other non-green, like, I don't wanna say shells, but pretty gravel, you know, just in places where you might not be able to maintain it from a water perspective?
Well, that's one of the reasons we had Conservation in the room, so we could talk about what's sustainable.
Yeah, I'd love to, I'd love to comment on that too, because you're right. It is, the phrase Greenscape does kind of imply that it's about plants. But, but what we quickly came to understand and realize is that this is, this is really much more than plants, that this really is an aesthetic impact overall. And everything from, as you said, ground covers, you know, mulches, paving patterns, furniture, lights, guardrails, you know, it all really comes into play as to what is impacting the visual experience. As Fred opened the meeting, that, that's, it's, you know, it's a really gut level. It's what does your visual experience tell you? Are you pulling in and seeing lots of clutter and, you know, spilled overturned, you know, barrels, wires, you know, hanging low that are broken? Or, you know, it's just a matter of simplifying the clutter. And a lot of cases, it is not about plants at all. So that's, that was one of the things that we discovered going along.
John, if I could just add a little bit also, we also spent a lot of time looking at effectively unclaimed curb cuts and sort of outscaled parking spots. And if you add up the sort of, how shall we put it politely? Many, many of the properties that are on the post road have sort of, over the decades, expanded their curb cuts from the normal fifteen feet to twenty to thirty to fifty to, you know, two hundred. And when we looked at the, the approved site plans, I know Katie and Nick spent some time and Jason did as well, there may be a total of a half a mile of reclaimable green space just by tightening up curbs and unutilized or overscaled or misaligned parking spots. We know that that's a, that's a long-term project. But again, that does speak to recapturing permeable areas and, you know, sustainable planning. That's a hard thing to accomplish, but that, that was a very big part of our discussion. And equally, John, we, we spent a lot of time looking at the walkability of the post road. You know, could there be over a thirty-year period an evolution of a really walkable sidewalk that's got continuity for the entire six miles? We talked about that, again, not easy, but part of the, the scope of what we looked at.
Great, thank you.
But again, sustainability, you're right, Lauren. We talked about that because it was a concern. And so that's, so we did have Conservation weigh in. And probably should go on to tell you that, and some of the people who are in the audience are not, you know, on the panel in, but they're listening. We had, we also had, the Tree Conservancy was at the table as well, as was the GIS guy from Planning and Zoning. So DPW was at the table, Parks and Rec in the form of Greg Kramer was at the table. So each person brought this expert, their expertise and weighed in. And the name Greenscape was just a general term for enhancing. One point that Fred is focused on, and they also coincidentally or fortunately touched on, is that to look at the gateways into Greenwich. And that when you come off of 95 or you arrive down North Street through Stanwich, you know, when you're coming into town off of the Merritt or 95, that what you're greeted with is consistent with the image of Greenwich. And that that's good for our economy. That's basically, we wanna be that. Anything else, John?
No, I'm just, I'm just putting on the screen, you know, different snippets of these maps just so people can see. This one I just clicked on is fifty-four megabytes, so that's taking a minute to load. Loading them one by one is a little bit time consuming here. But they're, they're on, hopefully you all have these as links and can take time looking at them. And, and you can see the amount of work that went into these and really such a great team effort. And thank you again so much help from towns, from, from staff and people that worked on these maps. And I, I really do think hopefully this is something we can mine for years to come and, and get benefit from. See, like a big strip like this, for example, we probably determined by looking at property lines that this was all asphalt and it was over the, the property owner's line. You know, just so things like that were all identified and just enumerated. But that, that's it. I mean, I can speak about specific things. I can go back to this, there's one, the double zero file has the, this key that's, that are showing you. So each one of those maps relates to one of these segments. And as it opens up, going from the, the west end of town all the way through up, there's number twelve, then we go thirteen, you know, and then all the way to thirty-seven. So, and that's the far east end of town. So they're all listed here and that's how you can navigate this, this, this long document.
So John mentioned, just, I'm just gonna throw this in on funding, that what the, it's starting with, you know, we call it Chestnut Alley, Chestnut LA, whatever. It's that island across from Karen's Koskowar. That, that had its birth with the neighbors, the residents wanting to raise money to fix it. And then they wanted to just give the town money, but we don't have a way of accepting it. So we've asked some of the local NGOs to act as the vehicle so that they accept funds, so that the funds from the residents go to, say, Green and Clean or, or the Tree Conservancy. The residents get a tax deduction and those folks buy the stuff that needs to be, those folks could then buy the stuff and contribute it to the town. It's not...
And that's not, and we're not exactly sure that's the way it's gonna go. We need to check in the law department and...
Yeah, we gotta check with people. We don't know how all that is gonna really, that's the, that's the straw man because we have no, oh, here, so here's Chestnut Alley. And that's the idea for it. Go ahead, guys. I'm no designer.
Well, again, with, as, as Richard pointed out, the, the idea is, is a beautiful, simple lawn with the beautiful overhead trees, well cared for and pruned. with the beautiful overhead trees, well cared for and pruned, the chestnut trees largely, there's some evergreens and and some ornamentals in that mix, but very, very simple. And then filled with bulbs that can come up in the spring as as Richard mentioned, the crocus hill as a as a sort of theme. And then it could just be mowed down afterwards, very low maintenance with that. But but there was also the the thought of of creating a slightly nicer bus stop. There is a bus stop here already, but it's just a bench and it's a very vulnerable feeling. So we thought, as you come down Stanwich Road here, you're kind of looking right at a, I think it's a Verizon box. We thought of creating a little bit more of a of a landscape around that, improving the walkway, giving that sort of a safe milestone place to be for the bus stop. And and other than that, it is really is quite simple. This also impacts, and one of the things we talked about a lot was both sides of the road. Because as beautiful and green as this can be, across the road, there's a lot of just asphalt paving without proper curb cuts that just leaves a lot to be desired and 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 makes this all feel so much more industrial. And there's these little places that pockets can be added, defining curb cuts. A lot of the new projects that come through P and Z that we looked at, that have been, you know, well organized with proper curb cuts and green strips. They just, they just look so much better and so much more cared for. And areas like this that have been over the years, just kind of paved and become these roadside parking lots. This this doesn't need to be this way. And I think that, you know, in cooperation with the with the owners and the leasers there, these areas can be tweaked and actually improve their business because it will make their establishments just that much more eye eye appealing. So it's really both sides of the roads that have to be addressed was was one of our guiding principles.
John, can you zoom in on the on the right, our right hand side, that area that was, we were looking at to extend where it's paved now, we thought actually, maybe reclaiming some of that?
We've, we're in the process of finding out who owns it and whether people need it for turning radii.
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of asphalt there, Nick, and it perhaps it doesn't need to be. Right now, it's just striped asphalt. And this was actually in our sort of naive days, the very, very first things we looked at, we're trying to find places for, you know, reclaiming asphalt. I I don't know that this will actually ever really become a reality, or if it needs to. You can see underneath there the striping. So adding this greenery and any place we found where we could add greenery, you know, we definitely recognize is a is a bonus and something that that could be a plus. But honestly, if this aisle, if this long stretch of existing grass and using the the talents of our Parks Department and, you know, their maintenance teams to just have that, you know, there's, it's just an amazing difference between a beautiful lawn and a bad lawn. And so just just maintaining this strip of grass as sort of an important patch of green will bring up the whole area. And then with the tree care and and the spring flowers underneath it, we think that that'll get you ninety percent of the way there.
Okay, so are we good? And you want to go from there, like next steps you guys talk about? Jill, one of the things we, one of the reasons we posted this meeting is that we wanted to make sure we were well hooked in with your Sustainability and Enhancement Committee. And that was a very specific request from Fred, that we make sure that a lot of the that the great ideas coming out of your group would be included in everything. Katie, Jill, you guys want to go ahead? Anybody want to say stuff?
Yeah, yeah, Margarita, thank you. And I I love the work that you've done and thanks to everyone for putting in such an effort and completing such an enormous, enormous task actually in the last couple of months. And I was thinking.
Twice a week.
Yeah, and I know that there's been representation, although I think more periodic from the Sustainable Sustainability Committee. What I was thinking is that if if schedules align, it would be, I think, really helpful and useful to have a similar type of presentation made at one of the Sustainability Committee meetings. We're scheduled to next meet on July twenty-third, I believe is the date. Yep, Thursday, July twenty-third. And if we could just get a maybe, I I want to hear what your next steps are on this, but just to figure out if a presentation can be made and how the Sustainability Committee can help the effort.
Great. Hein and Conti have day jobs some of the time, or so they tell us. So we'll just need to make sure that Craig's laughing. So talking about next steps. I think Katie touched on it, some of the stuff that you guys have all been working on together, since it's a lot of the town departments working. Katie, do you want to go ahead and talk about next steps and sort of how we would use if we could get an academic institution and all of that?
Yeah, I mean, well, just just on the the chestnut piece, we've already taken steps in the, you know, lots have been done on that already. We've spoken to the DOT as part of the greenscape effort. I have reached out to them and got involved in their roundabout where you have to talk to fifty people and then finally went up the right person. So I got I went through that exercise and I and I did forward that as part of the greenscape notes. So so as Fred had mentioned, you have to get an encroachment permit. So I think we know what we need to do in in terms of the state action. So then it's just a question of coming up with the plan and then coming up with who's going to maintain it and making sure that we're all on the same page, obviously, before we submit anything to the state. So that's in the works and I'm hoping actually we can, we can can get a lot of that discussion sorted out at this Thursday's meeting. And then beyond that, also for topic conversation for Thursday, is we all have connections at various universities. And I think we should figure out the best way that we can get maybe some interns if we can't get something. You know, some, well, we need to, we need to discuss it because there's a lot of different options. But I do like the option of getting some interns in is that we've had a tremendous success with that in the past. I'm talking about master's level students. And what we've been able to do is work out a credit system with them and and one of their professors. So however, we decide that we want to use one or many to help us with this project. I had someone reach out to me last week already. So I know that there's people floating around looking for stuff to do. So I think using that kind of manpower and connections to their universities, I think would be really, really good idea. And, you know, we'll just go from there.
You guys, go ahead.
So how after, if we accomplish, when we accomplish improving?
Thank you. Even if it takes forty years.
How will you prioritize, what were there, thirty-seven other little sections? How will you think about prioritizing the ones to do next? And then back sort of to the fundraising comment, if the public was able to donate money. Coming from the western end of town, the first thought that I had was, would we be able to improve equally or or would residents expect their donation to go only to their part of town, so to speak?
Okay, well, Chestnut Alley has designated that they just want to do them, that piece, and the money is for that piece.
No, yeah, and I understand that. And I think other areas might have more financial means to prioritize their areas, leaving some other areas under improved.
But to the extent that somebody's willing to earmark donations in general for the post road, there you go. So I think you're right. I think it's a great point. Pat Sesto.
So as a sustainable Connecticut recipient, our silver certification, we are eligible for funding from them. We've already received twenty-five thousand dollars in their first round of funding. And they are have opened up the second round of funding. So it is a matching grant and it's a one for one match and the donations have to come from the community at large. So it does not include, like, the town can't put up fifteen thousand and have a Sustainable Connecticut match it. So this would be a great opportunity if we can get a proposal together and get it out there. And to Lauren's question, you know, the matching part can be distributed or the base funding. If somebody is donating earmarking for a particular green space, the matching part can go.
Okay, John Conti.
Thanks. Yeah, I'd like to just respond to Lauren's question also. And thank you, Pat. That that does every little bit helps, right? But I think what priorities, the whole stretch is important. But we did identify the, as again, as Fred said, the really the entrance to the town at the west end, there's that big island there. Then there's another nice little green spot where Edgewood, Edgewood Avenue comes into the post road. Sort of in that McDonald's, the West McDonald's, and there's a nice green patch there. Then you jump to, you know, the top of Greenwich Avenue is an important area. The Chestnut Alley to exit four is an important area. Exit five, there's a lot there, that's an important area. And then the the far east end of town where there's those beautiful, you know, columns that so those kind of those points stand out. But I think the other, the the last point I want to make is that one of the important guiding principles that we did come up with, again, I'll repeat that phrase, that simple elegance, is that we don't feel that really any one spot should be, you know, a gilded lily, that that this should all just be unified cohesive, but without, without really any one spot becoming like a statement or, you know, just overly landscaped. And I think that's kind of the key to having this all be cohesive is is that it's it's done with an eye towards, you know, the the whole town and not that one area gets too much attention. And and I think when you think in terms of the way that this is experienced by just a general, you know, town resident or guest, you know, driving through again. That's really the filter to pass it through. It's it's not something where we get myopic about stopping and looking at one spot. So so prioritizing, there are high spots, which I just listed. But overall, we really wouldn't want to see one area all of a sudden just going over the top. That's my view, and I think that was shared by the committee.
Thank you, John.
So now, go ahead, Jill, sorry, I want to.
Thank you. Yes, just on on the same type of question, I think, I guess, I understand that from what you, your presentation, that the maintenance is going that the ongoing maintenance will be done by town services or are you going to be funding from the donors to do the maintenance as well? That that is a question that I would anticipate will be asked. It does speak to the prioritization as well. So I do think that going forward, it is prudent to have a documentation of how you will establish the priorities, particularly if not all of the costs will be covered by the private donations.
And we've tossed that issue of maintenance around a lot because, again, you want to make it better, but you don't want to burden the town with additional expenses going forward. Because this is, we all know, a tricky economic time. So we don't want to, we don't want to, we want to do this in a way that it doesn't add a spend burden to the town. So.
And to to that end.
I just wanted to.
I'm sorry, Jill, we lost you.
Yeah, sorry, my internet is spotty. I just wanted also confirm that there'll be no attribution of publicity regarding the donation. So there won't be signs signage placed on any of the improved areas that you know, sort of like the Adopt a Highway program that you see sometimes on state, but that's not contemplated as part of this, your improvement.
You mean, we can't make the Jill Oberlander horse chestnut tree? No, just kidding. No, we hadn't even talked about it, but I hope that people's egos don't need to be satisfied in that way, but but it's a great point.
Yeah, that hasn't, that hasn't been discussed really. I mean, with the maintenance part of it, sometimes that that idea does get tossed around, to be honest, Jill, where people say, well, yeah, I would be happy to contribute to that as long as this area maintained by X, Y, Z, whatever it is. But I I hear your point. We certainly don't want to. The the idea here is a simple elegance, not not proliferation of signs. But to to your maintenance point, I think, just on the, yeah, we're focusing on the chestnut, the chestnut area, but the other part of this project with the villages. I mean, that's something that Amy has has talked about in the past, too, where, you know, it's all one, it's all well and good to say, we want this bench and we want this light pole and we want this side of the other thing. But at the end of the day, there, the cost of the town as a whole, how it gets ordered, how it gets maintained. You know, you can't have fifteen different paint colors for garbage cans or benches or something along those lines. I mean, there's got to be a practical, a practical way to do all of this while meeting the community character goals. So I mean, just back to the point we were saying before, cliche as it sounds, that's why it's so important that we do this together to figure out what makes sense for all of these moving parts. So no, no answers yet, but just knowing that we we've got all the right questions, I think.
Right, having a set of standard guidelines, including attribution issues and will go a long way to answering the questions that I would anticipate will come up.
So, you know, I I get fearlessly competitive about Greenwich being the best sometimes. So one of the things is, I've been looking around for guidelines from other towns. I found a set of guidelines from two thousand and three that Stanford did. They're old. I want to keep looking. I, you know, just what have other towns done? What and what are they doing that's cost effective and smart? And to, you know, rather than reinventing the wheel, because we forget that Greenwich is in the state of Connecticut sometimes.
So that that set of guidelines that you just referred to is also on the agenda if anyone wants to.
Yeah, you guys have it. You'll see. It's old. It's not great, but it's something, but you can see that Stanford has done it. You can see where they've done it. Now, Katie, you and DPW have been talking about the trash receptacles and do you want to touch on that? Because that's that streetscape, that whole thing. Do you, either one of you want to touch on that, Amy?
I mean, we've been talking about nothing beyond what I've just mentioned.
Okay, I thought at some point you had talked about the villages. What are your thoughts on all of that?
Well, that was, that was the the budget item that we had, where that we've been trying to get that through. It is a really critical piece, to be honest. So I'm hoping that I'm just looking for the, so I'm hoping that we'll be able to get it through when we kind of make the necessary adjustments for this upcoming budget cycle. But effectively, it's a way that both DPW and planning and zoning will work together. It's a multi-year appropriation. It was part of the neighborhood plan implementation, how we did those neighborhood plans as part of the previous P O C D. It was intended to create a common theme and feel for each neighborhood through the signage and the furniture, et cetera. So we've talked about it, obviously, to that extent. But again, in those discussions, it's not as simple as just saying, okay, you know, yellow garbage cans over here, pink garbage cans over there. I mean, just to use a ridiculous example. So I think I, I, there's a lot of issues that really need to to be addressed as part of it. We need to tie it back into the those neighborhood plans that we did as part of the last P O C D, because there's a lot of good work in there. So it's using those plans, using what we're going forward with with the NGOs and the streetscape and then figuring out how to fund it and when to fund it, et cetera. Is all part of what we're, is part of that priority item.
And I guess, first of all, my bad, because I used the word RFP and what I, the term RFP and what I was thinking of. As you all sit and listen to all of this, if we were to get pro bono interns, graduate students, whatever, to help with design and with planning, what would your wish list be? That's what I mean by a request. You know, that we're requesting, and it's the wrong term. I I understand that I used a bad term. So what would your wish list be if we got, say, a group of Harvard design students who want to do a project for us? What are we asking for that would move us forward? Because we're not going to hire anybody in this environment. So all of you in the room, as you listen to this, what do we need to move forward? Jill just gave us some questions that we need to answer for how we lay it out, but what else do we need from them? And it, we don't have to answer that right this minute, but it's, what input do we need from people who are specialized? And John Conti had suggested last night, so yeah, we've been talking about this like nonstop. John Conti had suggested last night that we go around and poll some of the community people like Matt Pop. And and we'll in just get input, like, what do you, you know, what do you think? Jill, you had your hand up. I'm sorry, madam select woman or select person or select wonderful. Jill, you had your hand up, I'm sorry, Madam Select Woman, or Select Person, or Select Wonderful.
So I, I guess I, I would question why it is that. You would think that this needs to be done by a pro bono intern. And I think design in particular changes the entire, and I honestly. I came to this along a hard way. I started out not understanding design, but if you look at how good design transforms. An entire. Community and all you have to do is look at Lower Manhattan.
You're my new hero.
I'm sorry?
You're my new hero. For appreciating that and, and it's so, it's so important.
Go on to the Downtown Alliance, which is where I usually, we used to work and where I learned the value of, of design and take a look at the transformation in Lower Manhattan, the Canyon of Heroes. By signage, by concrete, and they learned the hard way on which kind of concrete by the gra, the granite. Cores and pillars by the Stone Street renovation and how you transform what had been a. More of an.
So are, Jill, are you asking?
National mixed youth. And so I, I'm just saying, I, I, you know, in this, think, think broadly, I, I just would wonder, don't undersell the value of a good design.
No, but we would, I think you're saying, why would you not use a professional consulting firm? And there are a few reasons, but one of them is that we have amazing resources already in town that are doing. Incredible pro bono work. You have John Conti, you have Richard Hine, you have the whole A R C, you've got the expertise of DPW, you've got. The Peter Levy from the commission is also an architect, you've got Nick McRae, so we've got great people in town. And then we can reach out, given who we are, we can reach out to top notch institutions. We're not getting. You know, somebody who doesn't know how to design. We're getting somebody who is going to go out and be top notch in the real world, and Greenwich is going to be on their resume. So our thought was, why not, since we have, John, these guys sitting in this room right now in the Zoom with us. They have extraordinary reputations. So they can, don't tell them that so much, I suppose. Now I gotta, when I hassle them. Next week at A R C, but. You know, I, I think we can do this in a way that's, that's, that's top of the line, which is what you're asking, I think. And still be very Greenwich, New England, cheap. And use our little dollars effectively. So.
Margarita, can I just add, I think. You know, this sort of gets into what I might call the design development phase. If what we've done on greenscape is considered comprehensive or schematic or feasibility analysis. What we're talking about now is branching out a little bit deeper into the design development phase. And as you know. That would really require, you know, a more in-depth look at a given site or a different section of the post road. When I was at Harvard, you know, we went, they sent us to Jerusalem for two months, all expenses paid, and we literally published a hardcover book. Sponsored by the Aga Khan. It was like a big deal. So I think we could, I'm talking to people up there. They would actually go into the process and most likely send a team down here for two or three months, you know, once a week, once a month. And they would produce a book or a series of books for us. We're not obligated to adopt or even to like any of it. But it could be a reference, which as Margarita said, would be, you know, for free. We could elect to, you know, learn from it or not. But I think it's in this economic time, a, a good way to, you know, kind of launch into the. Design development phase. And then, of course, this committee would say whether they want to, you know, run with any of it or none of it. But I think it would be a, a good, interesting study.
So for example, one question would be that we could ask is what are best practices in other towns? I always want to know. Where have towns accomplished something that makes them more effective, that makes, gives them better process and gives them a better look? So, you know, we could ask people to tell us, we've looked at the following towns. I'm not so smart, because I just got that suggestion from the public, but. Is, you know, we could do a best practices inventory and we would know. So that we don't make the same, we don't make mistakes ourselves, we can learn from others.
I think the survey idea is a good idea too. Having sat on a lot of the planning and zoning meetings, there seems to be a theme of. Public input, neighborhood input. So if we were to get that accomplished as well as. Somebody who can put together a communications plan and make sure that, because that's another thing, we are communicating, but somehow we miss. Important people, stakeholders, and then they feel that we're not communicating.
Great idea.
Has communication, marketing experience even, I think you should be looking at.
I, I think we should launch a design development, design summit and invite all of the players, maybe it's on a community basis or a village basis or the whole thing. But if there was an ongoing dialogue in the middle of a shred or a, a design summit that was more systemic. You know, just not once every 10 years or once every five years, but really kind of a conversation where this could become, it could be owned by the community. I think you're right. I think that's the way to go.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's kind of the point of this whole exercise actually is to, is to get that public input and buy-in. And in fact, I know Fred's been working on something. Probably as it relates to the R T M and getting, getting input on capital improvement projects and whatever. So, I mean, there's. To your point, Lauren, that that's obviously been a huge factor for the, the planning and zoning commission as it relates to the P O C D. And then that, the intention was, and the way we wrote the P O C D was that we would engage with the R T M considerably more than has been done in the past. And with the community at large. So that's been kind of the, the. Big driver within the P O C D. And this is a good place to start with that.
Quick interjection, again, regarding some of Jill, Jill's comments. I think. As Margarita said, it, there's plenty of talent in this town that can be tapped. I think the, the pro bono versus paid route is really a time equation. You know, and I think we have time on our side. I, I think if we needed to have this. You know, this final guideline booklet done by X date, we'd need to, we'd need to hire that. But, but if we, if we use the, the pro bono resources that we have. And we can, you know, we can let that evolve organically as it will, you know, with volunteers, it will clearly take longer. But I think we can get to just as high end a point. And, and with the stakeholder input is also a time, a time. Heavy requirement, but super important.
Yeah, we, I know, some, I, I know you're worried, Jill, that we, that Greenwich needs to do something that's excellent. That's what I'm guessing you're driving at. And I, we a hundred percent agree with you. But we're also conscious of Greenwich's motto being strength and frugality. And we think we can do both, and we want to give it a shot to do that. So. I've been working with this team long enough to have amazing, so much respect for them. And some of the people that are in this meeting, there are a lot of us here are listening, and they're extraordinary as well. And they've given countless hours. So, okay, how about this? If we begin to flail. We'll come forward and we'll say to everybody, hey, we've just really got to shell out some money. But let's do something that frees up money for schools and stat. Kind of thing. Cause we can do this, but you know, teachers have to be paid salaries kind of thing. And so that's the trade off is we think we can do this. So, Amy, Greg Kramer, Jim Michael, anybody else? Oh, Pat Sesto.
With regards to Stanford's 2003 plan, which was pretty detailed.
Yes.
We gotten, the, the benefit is it is in fact 17 years old. So have we gone back to Stanford and said, what, what have you learned? What worked, what didn't work?
I'm going to do that. I've, I've been, okay, so nobody laugh at me, okay? I've been going to other towns P and Z meetings because they're on Zoom. It's really easy. And I'm, I'm going to link in with Stanford soon. And I wanted to try and do that. If you guys have a contact in Stanford. Do you know their DPW people at all?
Yeah, we know, we know some folks over there. We can, we can see if we can find out from the operational side, maybe what, what they've seen.
Because one of the things, you know, I don't want this to be that we're all telling you, oh, we're going to make all this pretty. And then we make it difficult for another department to do their, so if you could, if we could know how it's gone operationally for Stanford, that would be a huge, huge thing. So, you know, where they have failed, and yeah, would be great if they would.
We could find out.
And Conservation, do you know them in Stanford, Pat? Okay, so maybe we get the input that way. I'll dig, I'll try to get into, they're a split, they're split planning and zoning. And it's not a good relationship, but we'll try to get into them and find out how they feel about how it's gone. I mean, they've done some cool things like the sculptures and the plantings and stuff like that. Some cute sidewalks. It, I don't feel like it's cohesive. So curious. Katie, any thoughts on people we could talk to?
Sure. I mean, I have my list serve of people, not the list serve, my own personal list serve of people that I always reach out to. It's basically the Fairfield County planners. We have a very close relationship, so I can certainly reach out to them. And definitely with West Cog also. I could, to the greater community, see what ideas they, they have hanging around.
And so in the searching, for example, I found some towns that have done some great individual things for their streetscape and greenscape. And I was going to reach out to their commissions and talk to them about it. Um, Richard, Richard, you look like you have a question.
Well, you know, I, I'm, I'm listening. I, I think one of the. Great potentials for this conversation is, is, is if the Greenscape Committee could interview, for example, Amy and Pat, Patricia. And, you know, the, the selectmen to literally say that, you know, how can we as designers serve you as the client, so to speak, in this theoretical sense? Because I think one of the things that we want to make sure of is that we understand the town's mission from your perspective. You know, as designers, we're looking to make things pretty and green and beautiful and all of that stuff. But, you know, we haven't had the opportunity to interview you as if you were the client. And that programmatically or in any other sense, I think would be a very good launching point for us.
Amy. Pat, are you, are you okay with that, you guys?
Sure.
Yeah, you know, keep them practical.
Well, I think that's, I, I, I think the folks that took part in the P O C D committee, you know, tried to impart. You know, information. And we're happy to throw out there what we have and then see what people want to do. You know, we, we were, we, we were pointing out, sorry, Nick, we were pointing out, we, we, our guys were all ready to do a couple pollinator pathways or highway guys, because they were like. Oh, we don't have to mow it as often? Hallelujah. You know, like they're, and, and we have, believe it or not, even though everyone thinks that highway is. You know, this evil group that only likes asphalt. They, there are a bunch of them who love flowers and have beautiful gardens. So they're, they're very interested in some of those things. And where you all are helpful is if, if it comes from us, the answer is usually no. But if there is a group that has convinced, you know, the public or, or gotten people on board with it, we are happy to come and do it. You know, we're not, we're not, we're not designers. So it needs to come from a different, a different. Venue, so to speak.
And this is.
Pride of the West Side, Amy.
What did you say, John, Eddie?
I just want to tell Amy, I've noticed the pride of the West Side, the DPW section by the Overpass, uh, west of Greenwich Avenue. You know, they're very, very proud. They've got flowers out there. They've got a sign out there that says, the pride of the West Side. It's a great thing to see.
So cute. I know, it's so adorable. I love that. I crack up there. John.
You know, this, this unleashes the power of Greenwich, is that if we as designers learn from Amy. You know, we are on this, we're pulling in the same direction. We're all rowing in the same direction. And I think it's, that's the strength of the Green State. When, when we sat down with Jason. And Conservation and, and everybody from Parks and Rec, we were just so impressed with exactly what Amy just said. Jason lit up when you, when you mentioned, you know, that you could plant perennials or plant pollinators, you know, we didn't really know that that was part of his, his thinking. But we learned very quickly that he wants what we want. And I think that's the strength of this committee, that we were able to bridge that. Communication gap, and we found strength in pulling this all together. And again. Thirty seven maps, six miles, 25 guiding principles, unanimous approval. So we're just excited to be able to speak to all of these agencies and really become. You know, they should become our client.
That sounds like a good country song title.
Yeah. Richard, that's actually getting back to what you said originally or before. We've done the, the schematic design. So just like in any building project, now, you know, we're going to get into the, into the design development. And I think actually interviewing. The various department heads, that kind of thing. There are the, there, they are the clients. And ultimately that gets back to, as if you were building a building or a house or something, to those things that actually Jill had mentioned. Talking about the long term, the maintenance, the budgets, all those, those ideas. It's, that's the next logical step. If you took even just one portion of one with the low hanging fruit as a project. If we say, yes, yes, take a look, let's take a look at a good design on a piece of paper, then we can start to really quantify. Maintenance and budget and all of those other things, just as if we were building a house. And if we stay focused that way, I think we can actually. Get to kind of the end result and, and get those, those standards going forward set up. So we know what concerns each department has, what concerns the, the general public has, and, and get these things done. I think if we, if we spent a little bit too much time unfocused, we'll start to lose the momentum we've already developed on Greenscape Committee.
Okay, um, Richard, you wanted to say something else? Conti? Anybody else? All thoughts? Katie, Fred?
No.
I'm not sure. Fred, can you hear me? Oh, he's muted and he's probably got to figure out how to get himself unmuted. I see he's there. He's actually there twice. Okay, so I, I, I guess it's just that going forward. We're going to meet with Greenscape on Thursday. We sent out an invitation. The staff person is actually sitting in with us right now, as are several members, and we're going to talk about the going forward. Just in case you feel like you have to lend your people, Pat and Amy, for a long time. This would not be, it's just to fill them in on where we're going. And then I think we're going to bring it back to working with the designers. Because we want to focus on Chestnut Alley, Chestnut Island, Chestnut LA. We, we're going to, but we, we do recognize we took a huge amount of your staff time. Because all during quarantine, it was twice a week, an hour and a half to each meeting. So it was a huge commitment and we wouldn't impose on you that way again, at least not right this minute. But, but we want to brief, make sure everybody hears that there's buy-in across the board for the direction. And that we'll keep reaching out to them to let them know. But in the meantime, I think we're going to a small implementation. And to laying out a plan for next steps and vetting it with all of you guys. And Amy, you mentioned something that we need to be doing as well as to be getting out into the community. Because there's, Greenwich is full of, of individualists who want to weigh in and we should get all their ideas and we will start doing that. It's homework. And if, I feel like I can never do enough of it, because if I don't do, if we're not engaged with people. Then you get surprised because someone has objections that I had that, we encountered that last week at P and Z. So. There were significant objections to something that we didn't know was going to run into. That kind of resistance. So if nobody has anything else to add, I think we're good to go.
Margarita, can you hear me now?
Yes, hello, Fred.
Hi, having problems. I switched over to a phone. I just want to thank you very much for putting this all together, Katie and, and John and, and Richard, everybody on this. It's invaluable and I, I think we're going to get some really good stuff done. I did reach out after you and I met, Richard met on, over the weekend. To a couple of property owners there, who, one of whom.
Us cop.
Yes, involved with one of the organizations here in town and. Circled back with the president of that organization and they, they're very excited about helping too, and possibly with some fundraising. So. I, I think it's starting to pick up a lot of steam. So I, I agree, the, the window's open. We want to make sure it doesn't shut. So. So I think now is the time to work on, on this project and as Lauren said, on other areas in town, including Riverside. I know we have some friends from Riverside on this call too. So thanks, thanks again for organizing this and for everybody who, who dialed in.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Katie, I'll see you at two. We have the, an interview with the Junior League.